If it is 5:30, if we could call the regular board meeting at the Amherst Executive Schools to order please by standing and bludgeoning the flag.
No.
My pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Please call the board.
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
Mrs. Watkins.
I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda presented, please. Motion, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Zappa.
Aight.
Mrs. Watkins. Mr. Engel.
Aight. We would move right into item number five, the good news report. Mr. Kipper.
Welcome, everyone. This evening, we're going to have a few things to share. First, we're going to start off with being here at Powers Elementary School. I started with Mr. Tefner's, Sherry O'Powers.
Thank you, board. Thank you, everybody, for being here. This is Lieutenant Mulder. Hey, the greatest part about being here for five years is I think we developed a lot of systems. We've come a long way, we've done a lot, and I mean that as not me. The cool part is I'm going to hand the title over and I'm going to let my assistant principal, I was supposed to say, I was going to give her your job.
There you go. Very good.
Assistant principal, Mary Scott Williams, come up here. She's going to talk about the first two items, and we have some teachers who are here to also talk about our MTSS leadership team, so I'm going to hand it off to her.
Good evening, everyone. Hello. So I'm actually going to have my friends come up and join me. The three things we're going to celebrate today are two beautiful programs that we have in our building, Best Buddies and Big Comments, Little Comments, and then Mr. Tefner will review our MTSS system and all the beautiful thing that beautiful growth that has done for our building. So I'm actually going to invite our best buddies to come on up. Evie and Jacob, you want to come up? And Maddie, Lily, Peyton, you guys can come up too. It's an important day.
Thank you. You guys are doing great.
All right. So at Powers, we have brought, and we've actually done this for several years now, two years, we have two different programs that we run. Our first one is our Best Buddies program. It is a nationwide program that we participate in. It involves inclusivity, connectivity, we're really trying to promote pairs of students to build friendships and connection. And Evie and Jayden, raise your hand, Evie, raise your hand, Jayden, they are best buddies. So they spend time on a weekly basis in the classroom, but also outside the classroom with activities. This year, we went to the pumpkin patch. We also did Special Olympics. We do a lot of great things. I know Evie has shared with me her favorite thing about Jayden being her best buddy this year is Jayden gets to come into her classroom and then he has to spend time learning together, and that's really fun. Jayden, do you want to share your favorite thing about being with Evie? Okay, you're doing great. I know it's hard standing up here, but I know that you told me you like doing crafts together, right? You loved Special Olympics, but that was a whole lot of fun. And so I have a couple of really great pictures regarding Best Buddies this year, and I will say one cool thing about Best Buddies, since we have over 60 students at Powers who participate in this program. And it's just, it's about making friendships and connecting, learning about people who are not like us, who are different. I will say we have several wonderful just parent feedbacks that really this was a great opportunity to build empathy and acceptance and really just also have role models and be a good role model, help a friend, understand a friend. I love Ashton at third grade, he said it was fun. I liked working with Mike, Mark, and Blake. He makes, we make each other laugh. I like that a lot. And that when they get to play, they got to do a snowball toss a couple times a year. And I will give our school counselors, Jill Coleman and Erica Stolling, they do a lot and help out a lot with this. But here's some of our best buddy pictures, doing all different kinds of crafts and celebrating important days. Sometimes we do a lot of boba noodles in this beautiful cafeteria. And there's you, there's you ladies, you're doing great. I think you're having fun building something together. Oh, this was our trip to the pumpkin patch, which was really great for all of our students to sit with their best buddies, you know, learning different ways to communicate and work with one another. And this was really our grand finale. So our best buddies attended Special Olympics this year. So the counselors, myself, we took 35 students to Special Olympics, and we were the only student cheering section, which was kind of cool. So we got to stay in the stands, we had beautiful signs, and did you hear us while we were cheering for you at Special Olympics? Yeah, you were running fast, too. I think, I think you won that race. Yeah, I think so. So it's a beautiful program that we're going to keep doing next year to come. And our second program we wanted to highlight was Big Comments, Little Comments, which I have to give a shout out to Mrs. Platts. We created this beautiful friendship with the junior high store where her wellness class, she actually has a Big Comment, Little Comment class, and we have partnered junior high kids with some of our kiddos here at Powers to really create that connection, fostering just role models and having good conversation about being a good student and making good choices. And so we actually have Lily and Maddie here, and their little comment is Peyton. And I know they want to share their favorite part about being a part of this and what they did to do. Maddie, you want to start?
Sure. We want to.
My favorite part about Big Comment, Little Comment was being able to bond with our Little Comment and like getting to know her and making her a student.
Basically, that everything I said, but definitely getting to bond with Peyton, getting to know her a lot.
All right, Miss Peyton girl, do you want to share your favorite part about being with these big girls?
They're fun.
I think you guys had a lot of fun, don't you? We laughed, and they played games. Something really neat that I know Mrs. Platts uses that class time where these junior high students are creating lesson plans, and they create actually activities specifically for their Little Comment, which is truly beautiful. And this year, we had over 100 junior high students and Powers students engage in this activity, and we're hoping to do it for years to come. So we're really looking forward to that. We've had a great time this year, right?
Yeah.
Dale. I will say some teacher feedback I've shared that really teachers have thought this was an excellent experience for their students to have good role models, to have Big Comments, kids that they can look up to and talk to, as well as just having students engage in their classroom activities. So sometimes Big Comments would go into the classroom or pull students out to do specific games on how to make a friend, keep a friend, very targeted things, which were great, specifically for what each kid needs. I really liked that top one, actually the bottom, Rosalyn, third grade. She said, "I liked that I could learn about my person and do fun activities like painting with them. My favorite part was getting to meet her and seeing her every week." So we had a lot of fun. Some great pictures, whether we did whole group activities in this beautiful cafeteria again, or games. This year, we also did make a little library that'll be a part of this beautiful storywalk by our track that everyone did together. And that'll be part of next year is restocking that library, making sure it has everything it needs, but that students will be a part of that community effort. And that's that for that one. But we are very proud. Ladies, I'm so happy you are here, and I did buy, or did each of you a beautiful tree box and a tree bracket, so thank you for coming. It takes a lot of courage to come up here and stand for all of these grownups, but I'm very proud of you all. Did an excellent job. Give him a round of applause.
Two of my teachers, Jen and Colin, you can walk up here. So MTSS, our multi-seared systems of support, something we're very proud of here. So I've come here before and I talked about our MTSS before, talking about the efforts we have for the comment hour. I thank the board for supporting us, allowing us to have that comment hour. We're a part of making that happen because our schedule, we're really flexible with a lot of kids, and its effectiveness is, if we go back in time, even having a wellness physician allowed us to have a sick special is actually a critical piece of us having a comment hour, which allows us to do intervention for every child in the school. So thank you to the board. In the past, when we came here, we talked about it, like proud of what our work was. Oh, what's really cool is now we can kind of start to say, now we're proud of what the impact is. We're having the impact. We are having results, closing achievement gaps for kids, and so we wanted to talk a little bit about that. And so I brought them up. I'll just hand the title over to them. I thought we could have really cool charts and everything. It's really complicated. Like, the charts are way too many words on it, so I'll hand it over to you on that. Next slide. Next one.
So if you look at the graph, this is each of our grade levels that we have here at Powers. Over the past two years, you can see the number of kids that we have on track. So the green was last year, and then the gold is this year. And so you can see that as the years are going on, we are closing those gaps, and we are having a larger percentage of our students arrive to us on track.
Yeah, and if you look up there, we're pretty impressed because looking at what we've decided to highlight, it's good to compare where our students were when they first started using cadence for our data collection piece in 2022 to now. It shows quite the positive change over time. That's kind of what we want to see. But our MTSS leadership team, which we're a part of, really has developed the last several years into something really great that I even, we've heard up in the district say, "Wow, we've got something great going on here." We've heard that presently. We meet with our grade levels, you know, Jen is grade level B for third, and I'm first grade, but we have really been able to work with our teams, you know, with all the process of instructional leadership, but also looking at like the R2I process, interior instruction, and it's, it's really taken off, and we have more doing it too.
In a few years of that, we're the MTSS leader for third grade. I feel like we're getting more comfortable about timing on our data and using all the resources that we have in our district to support the needs of all our students, and we're having some really good conversations in our grade level meetings and just really finding all the resources and what we need to support the students and our, and our teachers. So it's been very, very positive, and we're very proud of the work that we're doing.
So I'm going to just toot everyone a little bit more, and then I'll be done. Just to say, they may be downplaying, they are the instructional leadership for our building. They facilitate the changes that are happening. Our team needs quarterly, as a team, to discuss what's working, what's not working. There is no script we're following. We are literally that whole building the plane as you fly it. We are building the plane as we fly it for MTSS, and we're having success with it. We are successfully building that plane. These teachers then really become the leader for their grade level team and making sure that that team learns to analyze the data, and they really are reshaping how we provide support, how we close the achievement gaps for our children. So just give them a round of applause and say thank you. Everybody else, thank you very much for coming.
Any questions for Powers? Mr. Mulder?
All right, this time, I will ask David O'Dell, our human resource director, to come on up. We're getting a little staff recognition at this point. We'll start off with some new staff that will be with us this evening, or Jen be hired, and then we'll go into our retirement celebration.
Thank you. So we have a big welcome for two new staff members, one that's going to rejoin us here next year, and then one that's rejoining us next year. So happy to announce, and if you've seen online, Andy Kaufman, who was a great man standing up. Andy Kaufman, the senior speaker high principal, and he's coming close to the Marine fellow. He spent the last six years the principal there, and then previous staff here as the executive of the outcomes. He's joined with us tonight by his wife, Kelsey. They've been married for 11 years, and they have three kids with them, too. So they have Ripper, Piper, and Sawyer. I saw. If you've seen at the post, Andy loves soccer, professional soccer player, dream, right?
Right.
Dream. And also loves being outside and spending time with family. So welcome to board, and we're excited for next year. Should I go in the crowd and say? Anything you want to say?
Yeah, I'd love to.
Improv to.
Thank you so much. Just a couple of quick things. I got to break the ice and send the AGH staff my first email with Nick and I together as a partnership yesterday, and the headline title was just hello, a thank you, and a couple of introductions. So Dave took care of the introduction, but just want to say hello and just express the gratitude to the Amherst community, you know, for giving me the opportunity to be the principal at AGH and partner with Nick Dorr as the assistant principal, and Kara as well. Rebecca, I'm sorry. We're just so excited to be in Amherst. It's a dream come true for myself, you know, my wife, Kelsey, and just want to say how grateful we are for the opportunity, so excited to get started as I transition out of Lorraine and back to Amherst. So those of you that have shot me an email or gave me a warm welcome, I can't tell you how much I appreciate it. Really looking forward to getting started, and thank you.
And so in addition to that, as Andy mentioned, we have some rejoining us. So Nick Dorr, it's Andy. And those next, we're very happy he's rejoined Amherst and becoming a common, so he kept all his common gear. He can wear that.
It never actually got packed away.
As we say, during interviews, he had those ready to go for us. So obviously, he's next, spent two years with us as the Dean at North with Ashley, very again, and then most recently this past year as the principal at middle school in Broken Side Shackle Village. So thank you for coming back. He's joining with us tonight with his mom and dad, right?
Yeah.
Dean and Jackie. So want to say something?
Sure.
Home sweet home. It's the first thing that comes to mind. So I remember one of my last days at North last year, I sent an email to the admin team that just thanked everybody for the two years that I got to spend as the newest students at North, and I ended the email by saying, "I sincerely hope to one day rejoin this team," and so this is totally a dream come true to be back. So thank you, you know, for welcoming me home, you know, as warmly as everybody has, and I'm excited to partner with Andy next year, and this is going to be awesome. So thank you very, very much.
So those are our well homes, and happy to get up for retirement. Okay, we're going to do the video first, and then we'll go ahead and do it.
All right, so now's when we're going to recognize our retirees. Look, raise your hand if you're retiring, you're here tonight. Raise it high.
So I wanted to do that because last year, we had almost everyone attend, and this year, because, like, I had family, there's other things, Diana's a little bit content tonight. But, you know, Diana, can you call it the Diana Viva Show, which I think you're going to appreciate it, right? So here's a time where we like to have you share who's with you tonight, and just talk about your experience and your career here in Amherst, talk about the memories, the good times, thank staff members and other people who've been with you along the way. Just share things, and anyone from the staff also will share some things as well. It's really just a chance for you to talk to the board a little bit and just talk about, again, your career, what you've gone through, and we just want to hear from you tonight, okay? So would you like to come up?
Okay, first of all, it wasn't that easy to come back. I was in Columbus with my class today. I had to make a choice, do I go to Columbus or do I come back early? Or come back early? So I made the choice that I want to be with my kids. So I went to Columbus and Ashley drove me back so that I can be here in time for tonight. I feel like it's really important after 35 years to get that recognition. I put in 35 years in education, 29 of them being in Amherst. I started out in math. I've been a three-man team, a two-man team, I've been self-contained, I've been on a four-man team, I've been on departments, everything that you can imagine, and I've taught every single subject, ELA, math, social studies, science. My real passion has always been math, so if you had anything for math, you would know that that was really my thing. But I embraced social studies and science. I needed that little break from math because it's stressful, and we think you have to help every kid understand math to keep going in that forever. So switched to social studies and science, thought I hated it, used to yell, "Science sucks," across, so Mr. Hermans couldn't hear us because he was my team member, and found out that I really did love science and social studies and loved doing the experiments, doing fun social studies projects, having parents, maybe it didn't lend itself to have parents come in and help out. Science and social studies, we had mystery scientists come in, kids had no idea their parents were going to be popping in and doing a science experiment with the kids. Mr. Mulder took part in it. It was really just a fun way to end my career. I felt like I was about to pass here, didn't have to worry about a state test anymore. It was just so enjoyable, so nice. Never did I intend to go back to fourth grade. I started my career in fourth grade, one year top fourth grade, and then I spent like 30 years in fifth grade, and then ended my career in fourth grade, and I really loved it. I've enjoyed working for Amherst, for sure. There have been stressful times, like last fall, I never want to see anybody get through that again. But my friend, last night, sent me the coolest quote. She said, "This is a great way to end, to be like you're, since you're retired, this is a nice thing to think about." You know, most people end up with no more than five or six people who remember them when they leave their job, but teachers have thousands of people who remember them for the rest of their lives. And I started, when she sent this to me, I started thinking about it, and I was like, "Mrs. Bishop in kindergarten, Mrs. Wenzel?" I was even running away, I was going to live with Mrs. Wenzel, I had my bags packed, and my mom's saying, "I'll take you there," but I don't want to say that. I went all the way through all of my younger teachers, and I can remember every single one of them. Now, when I got to junior high, you had so many, and not all of them stood out, but all of my elementary teachers stood out, and that's when I realized what an impact teachers really do have on so many people. Families remember you. I go into stores, I was telling, at the ATA dinner, I was telling that my kids never wanted to go to Target with me. We would be sitting out in the parking lot, and they would say, "Mom, you have to promise us that when we go in there, we're going to come right back out, and you're not going to talk to anybody." There is no way that I'm going into a Amherst store and getting in and out without talking to anybody, because even if I don't really recognize them, somebody stops me and then they start talking, and I figure out who they are, who I had, and, sorry, we didn't make it in and out, we are talking. Sorry, guys. I haven't did that many, many times. I have with me tonight my daughter, Zoe, and my husband, Mike, and my son, Chase. And I had the pleasure of having both of my children in class. Gave her water detention, and he was very close. Yes. Very enjoy.
Never got teacher parent conference. No.
She was crying, and I gave her her detention. I'm like, "What are you crying about? Your mom already knows." So yeah, I really enjoyed working here and meeting people along the way, working with the staff. This is a great place to be, and anybody who has kids in the district, you know it's a great place to be. People genuinely care about your kids. And making memories. We make a lot of memories together, you know, with the staff, this hidden room. Yes.
What are your plans after?
What am I, oh, my plans after, immediately after, my daughter's getting married in July. We're building a house right now, and what's it going to be doing? Retirement? The cabs lost, like I had four major scrubs. The cabs were number one, because I was having to schedule my life around seeing those names. And then my daughter's wedding, and then the house building, and retirement was really good. Getting my room cleaned out has been tough. Yeah, 35 years. And luckily, I moved my roof, I cleaned some of it out, but yeah, those are my plans. I don't think I'm doing anything for a while. Brian Noone from the tour company asked me if I would do tours for him, and I'm considering that, but I don't know, we'll see. No big plans.
Well, then, we just want to thank you for being a part of our district. As you mentioned, you know, the teachers and staff are the heart of this district, and they make so much impact on our families over all these years, and you certainly have made tremendous impact for so many families, me, my own, all my children. You just have an admirable job. I've told people before, and you know this, for many of those years, with value-added test scores, you, you say, okay, they save the district sometimes, but you're amazing test scores. So I should be very proud of everything you've done in Amherst for our community, our kids, our families. So we just want to wish you the best. You're always open to the bat. Thank you so much. So give her a big round of applause. And then this time, I asked the board if we could take a nice, quick refreshment break, so everyone has a chance to talk to Diana, recognize her, and say hi, and thank her for all of any wonderful years, and families, everyone's welcome to get some refreshments and cookies, and say hi to Diana, congratulate her on her retirement.
See what I got? You guys, cookies. If I hadn't come, there'd be no cookies.
We will take a recess for about 10 minutes. Okay, at 6:08, we will reconvene the regular board, beginning this time. With item staffing clearing of the public, I don't believe anyone has signed up to address this evening, as the public looks like they've all departed. So we'll go right into the most exciting part of the evening, the treasures report.
Oh, yay. I hope that wasn't sarcasm, Mr. Engel.
It was not sarcasm. It's the most important thing on the agenda.
All right, so the first thing that we'll cover this evening is, I think I told you last time, that the financial audit hadn't yet been released. It was released May 8th. It's on the Auditor State's website. Julie Nigro, an independent public accountant, performed the fiscal '24 audit. We previously, for like six years, were audited by the Auditor State's office. So the single audit that they performed was nutrition services. We have substantial USDA national school lunch program, national breakfast program revenue. It was a perfect audit. We have received in our financial audit an unqualified opinion, which is what we want. It sounds weird, but unqualified means that's exactly what we want. There were a couple of management letter comments this year for the fiscal '24 audit. For our Esser, if you recall, that was the final round of stimulus monies. Our Esser was our Fund 507. That was overappropriated, so to speak. It had to do mostly with advances and returns of advance to the general fund. And then the other comment that we had was we did not have a local records commission being And then the other comment that we had was we did not have a local records commission meeting in fiscal '24. Really weird, because we had more than one in fiscal '23. We've already had a couple in fiscal '25. So anyways, overall, it was a very good audit. And we should commend ourselves. It's not just the treasurer's office, it's everybody. All the secretaries, all of the building administrators buy into the internal controls and procedures that we have in the district. So we'll jump into the real excitement as Mr. Engel said. We're gonna talk about the five-year forecast this evening. You all know it's a requirement of the higher advice code. It's submitted to ODU, semi-annual requirement in November and an update in May. It's for the general fund and the emergency levy fund. Next year, we will not break apart the general fund and the emergency levy. That's a new auditor state rule. So we were supposed to use '16 fund four years ago. And now we don't have to because they've changed the rules. So the detail in the five-year forecast consists of the three prior years, '24, '23, and '22, and the current year, and four fiscal future years up to fiscal '29. Revenues, expenditures, and projected cash balances are contained in the assumptions. I'm gonna say this more than once. The assumptions used in the projections are more important to me, in my estimation, than the forecast itself. The purpose for the old report, as with any large entity, looking to the future, future casting, forecasting, projections are very important. We look at state revenue and local revenue, the two largest revenue streams. It's for a planning for consistency. And everybody knows that works in my department, that my favorite word is consistency. And it's also planning for change, enrollment changes, inflation, and things like that. Shows the district's anticipated revenues, forecasted expenditures, and estimated cash balances in the future. And then one of the things we need to look at is that ending cash balance in line with the district's cash balance policy, which is currently three months' cash are required, preferably four to six months. One of the obstacles on our journey, expenditures overtake revenue. There's uncertainty. And the further you look to the, into the future, the less accurate it will be. It's just the nature of the beast. Changes, decreases in federal awards, any changes in revenue streams, changes in legislation for which we have no control. Dr. Messer's not here tonight, but she often shares discontent, malcontent with some of the pending legislation at the state. We have inflationary economic conditions. Although inflation has tapered off somewhat, prices have not gone back to pre-COVID levels. So we still have elevated prices and it drives everything. Estimated or increased shipping costs mean textbooks cost more and instructional materials and things like that. So again, I'll tell you that the written assumptions, the graphs and the charts and appendices are more important than the forecast. And the assumptions, the 38 or 39-page document that you have should be read and understood because the detail in the assumptions tells you what is projected. So for instance, for salaries, it's going to tell you what the base increases are for the bargaining units. And that drives the calculation. So the assumptions are very important, more important than the forecast itself. And mind you, that the audits now are going to consist of an audit of the five-year forecast. So I'm gonna give you CliffsNotes. Who knows what CliffsNotes are? Revenue is static as we know it. Expenditures grow rapidly and new revenue is necessary. I mean, in the slide, this is the presentation. Revenues, we know that real estate revenues increased in, due to the 2024 sex annual reappraisal. We do expect inside knowledge collection to grow due to new construction. However, it's not easy or accurate to project. We don't know the number of permits that are being pulled, the pace of the build-outs and developments and things like that. So we can look back and say that, you know, there was $9 million in new construction for residential agriculture last year. But we don't really know going forward what that's going to be. We know that line two, public utility, is expected to grow very, very slowly. And understand that public utility valuations, even though we have full collection on them, what's important to note is that there's a depreciation schedule. So if no new construction's being added to public utility, it's going to be depreciated and thus we collect less on it due to the depreciated values. State funding or the Fair School Funding Plan is expected to be reduced. But to what degree, we don't know. Restricted funding, that's line 104, is also being reduced. Property tax allocation is static. That's line 105. And that's what we all know as home set fallback. Other revenues, expected to reduce, basically due to falling investment revenue, due to declining cash balances. But the other revenues, it also includes tuitions from other districts. It also includes things like preschool tuition. It includes class fees, course fees, things like that. It's not overall a very large line in the forecast. So we're gonna jump into a forecast, excuse me, the general property tax graph. And just shows that from 2017 to 2021, it's very similar, very, very similar. We had some increases in this year and we expect next year and 2027 also to grow. But what we want to point out in 2028, 2029, is that there is a renewal model. The property tax from 2012, current expense levy, will need to be renewed by the end of 2027. So that revenue is taken out of line one and moved down to the renewal line. That's why you see the increase there. This is line 1035. This is the house bill version for 2026 and 2027, the biennial funding. And you see Amherst there, it's the third line down. And it shows that in year '26, we're supposed to lose about $199,000. And in the next year, $653,000. Now, this is less than the executive budget that came out in January. But we still don't know, we won't know until the end of June, what our funding will look like for unrestricted and restricted. And that's line 1035 and 104. So this is just the graphic representation of what has been happening with our unrestricted funding since 2017. So we had some growth from 2017 to '19. Then during COVID, we knew that we were going to have a reduction. It popped back up to about $14 million. But look at how our expenditures are growing. Just by nature of the beast, everything increases in price. And our revenue is generally, the trend line there, is very downward sloping. So what I want to point out is that fiscal '25, the $14,740, that is based on the April number two foundation settlement. So the house bill version could reduce by $1.05 million over the next two years. The executive version in January was $1.3 million deduction, reduction, I should say. But who knows? How are we supposed to forecast fiscal '28 and '29? To always be projecting a decrease in that revenue line, it doesn't make anybody think that the state's not doing their part to support public education. That's what I think. So unrestricted funding, this is just kind of a 3D representation. Funding has decreased since 2011, all the while vouchers and that choice have expanded. Anybody have any editorial comment here? All right, so you've seen this, every year you see this. This is a representation of the percentage to the whole of each of our revenue lines. So blue is property tax, 43.33%. Our unrestricted grants, A, is about 35%. This is very similar year over year. Here is fiscal '29. And what's different about this is that the gray pie shape at the bottom, line 103, is that I project a school district income tax as part of the revenue makeup in fiscal '29 that accounts for almost 16%. So just to isolate revenues and cash balance, you can see where in the 2010s, we were increasing our cash balance. Our revenues also were, well, somewhat increasing. But we have another graph down the road that talks about expenditures and cash balance. And the expenditures looked very different in the 2010s. So what I will say is that expenditures in 2010, pardon me, revenues in 2010 were $35.2 million. And revenues this year, $41.8 million. Revenues have increased 18%. Keep that in mind, 18.4% revenues have increased in 15 years. But let's look at expenditures in the next few slides and see what increases we see there. Expenditures, salaries, current staffing levels generate $29.5 million in salaries by fiscal '29. And that is just, this year and next, there is a base increase expected because it's already been negotiated. But in fiscal '27, '28, and '29, it's only a bit, it's only a step increase. Step increase costs about 2.4%. Benefits, we know that increases in compensation drive increases, like increases in retirements and FICA. Recall that the board share of retirement is 14%. FICA is only 1.45%. But as revenues increase, this will cause this line to increase as well. Healthcare inflation then is the other very large portion of the benefits, fringe benefits line. Healthcare inflation drives increases in health insurance premiums. And healthcare inflation exceeds that of the consumer price index. Purchase services, growth, I have capped at 3% because it's what the forecast can sustain. But that's unrealistic because purchase services have definitely been growing at a year-over-year rate far greater than 3%. We have excess costs, utilities, any other outside services in the purchase services category. And those frankly have been growing quite rapidly. There's detail in the assumptions about each purchase service object, and it shows the growth. Jumping into a stacked bar chart here for total salaries and fringe benefits since 2010, this is very telling. In the 2010s, we've talked about this before, there was a period of attrition in the district. We had lost 600 to 700 students, is that correct? 600 to 700 students we lost. And the district hadn't previously been, well, bright sized staff-wise. So in that ensuing about eight years, if I'm correct, there was a loss of about 38 to 40 professional positions that weren't replaced because we didn't need to because we had lost 600 to 700 students. That's called attrition. So you can see where salaries and benefits even had some decreases in the 2010s, but they've been ramping up since then. By the end of the forecast, salaries and benefits exceed 40 million? Is that 40 million mark? Yes. This is just a quick snap. The left margin is cut off a little bit. I apologize for that. Expenditures for which we have no control. There are quite a few expenditures which we have no control over. And one of them are tuitions and excess costs. And those are costs for student population that have individual educational, IDPs. And this is just a, it's not an assault or anything like that. It's just, look at 2017, $730,000. And this year, it's estimated to reach $1.6 million. We have no control over this. We have no control over the student population that we've in our district that have extra needs, right? Utilities, we don't really have any control over the cost of utilities. Usage to some point, but from, you can see from 2017, we had a couple of years of decreases. But they've been ramping up. I capped it in the forecast, you see in the assumptions, at 3%. But just from 2017 to 2025, we have $300,000 increase. And from 2017 to '29, we expect about a 50% increase from start to finish. Expenditures for supplies and materials, I again have capped the growth at 3%. And adjustments have been made in each individual year for textbook adoptions. Some years, the textbook adoption's much less. McKenzie isn't one year, $1.3 million in the forecast. So and some of those are legislated requirements and things like that. And the textbook adoption cycle, you have out there for what, six years or so? Six years. And that's an appendix in the forecast. Capital, we expect to spend about $810 this year. And that includes what's already been spent and what's encumbered still. The major assumption for capital is that all capital expenditures for permanent improvements will be moved to the permanent improvement fund. And that is because of moving two mills over to PI and to get that kind of unknown out of the general fund forecast. Other expenditures, I think that's line 4.3. We really don't know enough to project annual material changes in that. So we leave it around $530,000 throughout the forecast. Things like other expenditures are treasury and auditor fees, bank fees, investment advisor fees. Some of the other payments to administrators are on behalf of administrators or on behalf of the board or memberships and things like that. Those are other expenditures. Just a quick look at supplies and materials. And this is all of the 500 objects added together. Back in 2019, we were at 1.3, went down a little bit. By the end of the forecast, again, these have been adjusted. There's some increase projected, but then they've been adjusted for what we believe to be the textbook adoption cycle as well. So by then, by the end of the forecast, we're looking at about $2.5 million. And this has changed since the November budget. Since the November forecast, it's decreased somewhat. So we talked about revenue and cash balance. So this is, if you remember, what the increases were in revenue. Does anybody remember? Was it 41? 18.4%. And how much have expenses increased from 2010? 30%. So we had a $34.9 million budget in 2010 and a $45 million budget this year. And by the end of the forecast, the appropriations will exceed 50 million. It's hard, it's hard to keep up. It's hard to keep up. I actually have this graph with revenue expenditure and cash balance. And I think I showed it to you guys at Capitol Conference. But it felt really busy, so I broke out revenue and expenditure. And even though we have, you know, revenues increasing, hopefully due to new money passing, it's hard to, it's hard to keep up with the rate of expenditure increase here. This is also something that you guys have seen, a more concise snapshot of the beginning balances, revenues throughout the fiscal years, expenditures, and any cash balance. Everything is actual up to fiscal 2024. And then fiscal '26 and '27 includes new levy revenue. And then the purple in '28 and '29 both include a renewal and new levy revenue. So November '25, the new levy, I recommend, is an earned school district income tax of 1%. In the purple, the levy, that is, we had talked about it already, the 2012 current expense needs to be renewed by November '27 to continue collection. And that is about a $2.9 million collection every year. Anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions? This is my up-and opportunity. How can we be expected to keep expenditures constant when we know costs increase in every other area of our lives? And then looking at the forecast, and I purposely don't show you guys the numbers because I don't want you to concentrate on only the numbers. But when we look at the forecast, and we've seen detail about what we expect to happen with unrestricted, that's the Fair School Funding Plan. And we know that there's legislation out there that wants to eliminate property taxes altogether. But realizing that there's a serious problem with state funding and knowing that pending legislation continues to erode the funding and the rights of our public school districts, we all need to contact our legislators and advocate for public education today. It can't wait. It can't wait. We are, we are collecting less and less every year, even though they did this wonderful Fair School Funding Plan. And we know that there are winners and losers in any funding plan. We know that. But the state is very quick to take funding away when they see that local wealth is increasing. And I just feel like we all need to, today, contact the people that are supposed to be advocating for us. Here's my note. The assumptions utilized in the forecast are those that I believe that are most likely to occur in the forecast period. I don't have a crystal ball, though, so I'm just presuming. And the modeling of the school district income tax represents my recommendation. A levy has not been decided upon by the Board of Education. I want to make that very, very clear to everybody watching at home, is that there is nothing in this forecast that's really the work of the board. This is my presumption of what will happen and what seems to be the best course of action. Mr. Mulnar and Mrs. Walker and I have spent countless hours discussing this for the last two months about what we feel is the best course of action. And because of the pending legislation that continues to attack real estate revenue for the district, which has always been the purvey of local school, of a public school district, is to collect and levy taxes. This is, again, our recommendation, and it's not been decided on by the Board of Education, but will be within the next month. So the conclusion, expenditures always increase more rapidly than revenues. There's not enough information to accurately project our state foundation. Could be a loss of 1.3 million in the next biennium, but we won't know until the end of June. So as soon as we find out, this forecast is out of date again. New money in November and a renewal by November of 2027 are key assumptions in this forecast. Cost containment is necessary. Whether we, we get the new money or not, cost containment is very important in the strategic plan. It speaks of strategic budgeting. And I will just say, that is more difficult than, than it seems. It seems like on paper, you could just apply costs to everything in the strategic plan. Seems like you could easily prioritize expenditures. Do we have to replace everybody who retires or resigns? Do we have to buy $1.3 million in textbooks? I ask the questions, and I pretty much know what the answer is going to be. Strategic budgeting for an operation such as public education is not a good idea, as Mr. Mulnar. And then, is negative is what a forecast often seems. History almost always shows that the actual position is more favorable than the forecast. Should be. I may not have a job if it was the other way. So, this is my conclusion. Hopefully, it, it makes sense to you when you take a look at the numbers and you take a look at the assumptions. One essentially needs a crystal ball. Forecasting is perhaps more an art than an exact science. So, this is what we have. We have a positive cash balance at the end of the forecast. Our work is not done. We need revenue. We need to reduce some expenditures. And I think together, those two things at the same time, again, not as easy as what it seems, will be in good shape for the next forecast period. Any questions?
The question or comment that I would have is knowing that there's petitions being circulated to remove property taxes. And there's a large contingent that thinks that that will be on November 8. And if that should pass, what timeframe would the Amherst schools be able to exist? Because they won't have any money being collected, and you'll only get payment for the last half of, of the current year because it will stop, it will be effective January 1st. So it's not just Amherst schools, it's every school in, in the state of Ohio. I'm not saying-
Exactly.
But I think that there needs to be some thought given to that because we don't know that, as well as we don't know if there will be any funding from the federal government as we move forward into next year either. And if we do get that, do we have any guarantee, which we know, that the state would give us any of that money that the state gets from that component? So I think that your statement that you need to be, we need to be talking with the people who are making those decisions at every level of government, it's not just the state level or whatever. Because it's going to impact the local group more than anything. Because how are we going to raise the kind of money that we collect from citizens of any community, not just Amherst? But public education is in dire need of somebody to step up and say, it, it may not exist. It may not exist. Maybe only those who can afford to pay education will get education.
Right.
And I, I'm a little leery of that. Because part of me thinks that that issue will pass because people are so distraught about their income tax, that it will pass if it hits the ballot. So that's just, you know, I think that as leaders in education, bringing facts to us to try to make things that'll work the best, what, what plan do we think that we would need to have in place? And I think we'd give that some thought. As a board and as our leaders.
There's a, really a lot to unpack to what you're saying. And we've thought of all these things. I think I spoke on the first slide about changes in federal revenue. But if I think back to my compensation detail for the next five years, we currently have about 1.2 million, 1.25 million of salaries that are funded through federal programs. And that's Title I. 6B is IDEA for Special Education. We have improving teacher quality. We have ESL, which is English as a second language. We have support, student support, and achievement. All totals $1.25 million a year that takes those expenditures for compensation out of the general fund and moves it in. So what happens if we lose our, we lose our federal funding? So each year is going to be at least $1.25 million less cash at the end of the year. Okay? If we look at this graph right here, now, it's just a chart, excuse me, $14.8 million we project at the end of this fiscal year. That's more than the three months' cash, certainly. But if there is no real estate revenue coming in to supplement that 14.8, and we only receive net cash, $800,000 a year, a month, from state revenue, from the foundation formula, you can see that that's not going to last a half a year.
No, it won't. It's going to be out of business.
So, and, and we can't go in the hole. There's no way. We can't get business loans, you know, liquidity loans or anything like that. So you really have a lot of points, good points there. And I, I don't know how to, how to go from here. If anybody has any suggestions, I mean, we've written letters from the administration to parents, and I super appreciate all of the parents that responded and asked questions and told me that they had already contacted legislators and things like that. But if we have 3,700 students, that's a lot of parents. And it's, it's, it's not enough advocacy to, to have our voices heard. It, it just isn't, so.
And that's why the general public don't comprehend, or don't understand, or aren't aware. You know, they hear it and they don't realize the impact that it has in that. And I think that that's one of the things that, anything we can do to make the parents more aware that this is not a matter that is just going to affect the Amhersts. So it wouldn't matter whether you were in Amherst or whether you were in Timbuktu. It's going to affect you in the United States, I mean, in the state of Ohio. And it will affect the United States if the federal does. So I just think that it's, it's an issue that we need to bring to the forefront because we will have to make, this district will have to make decisions regarding that, maybe sooner than later, that, you know, we know we have to make a decision if everything stays at status quo for us to survive in '27. But it could be that we're going to have to make a lot of other decisions. Some of those decisions may not be pleasant decisions because I think we all are realistic that we can't say, oh, we need to have a 30 mil, we need to have, we need to collect $30 million somehow from you. You know what I mean? How are we going to do that? How are we going to take the district and say, okay, we need $30 million? What are we going to do, a fundraiser? Raise $30 million?
It's a lot of cupcakes, you say.
It's a lot of cupcakes.
I think of cookies.
And I just think that's, that's the reality here. So, you know-
That's for one year.
That's for one year. That's not so, you know, if you've got someone that's just starting first grade, and you multiply that by the time they're going to be a senior or 12 years of education, I think it's very scary. Make it very scary for every public school in Ohio.
I was just going to ask, what kind of response were you getting from parents and stuff like that?
They were all positive. They, they were asking questions to understand things better so that they could write a succinct and powerful, you know, email to our legislators. They were asking for further explanations and things like that. It was very positive, but I, I don't, I don't think it was more than six or eight responses.
And maybe we need to publish a letter that can be copied or duplicated or whatever and say, every parent in this district needs to forward this to, and let's list the people that they need to go to. Because they don't know who the legislators are possibly that they need to go to.
Senator Manning and Representative Joe Miller.
Yes, I understand that. A lot of people, they know those names, but they have no idea that they have an impact. Whereas if we give them a sample letter, and even if they just change the name, copy it and insert that, I think that we might get some response because those letters can be emailed to those folks.
Oh, yes.
So we can put all of that, these emails. And I think each of us receives something from someone asking us to sign something, from Kathy somebody else, whatever. And I think we need to do something very similar that to our residents. And it needs to go to all the residents in Amherst. We have a, we know we can get to the residents that we have students from. But I think that, you know, maybe Main Street would something out like that if their board would adopt something like that. Any public entity that we sit on or are part of, if we can encourage those people to do that, that would be helpful. I mean, maybe it's, we talk to council and say, hey, this, your largest employer is in trouble, not because we haven't done things right, but because of the governance.
I would guess that it's one of the largest employers in-
It is the largest employer in Amherst.
And at $50 million, it's one of the largest going concern. So it's not a small entity. It is not inexpensive to educate students. It's the responsibility we're charged with. And I mean, I think we take a lot of pride in what we do in Amherst, but it's not inexpensive. And I don't know what to do with a forecast where we have declining revenue.
And I'm not saying you have anything to do with it. Because that forecast could be useless in the end of-
End of June. Yeah.
It could be useless. And it could be obsolete by November 7th or 10th or whatever day it lands.
Yes.
It could be obsolete. You would never need another five-year forecast of that caliber because the state wouldn't care. They're not going to look at it. The five-year forecast is going to have to come from a local group of people of how we're going to survive. That's all I, that's all I think that we need to get the word out.
I don't even know how a school district dissolves in the state of Ohio. I have no idea.
That's what I'm saying.
I, I know how school districts merge, but if Fireland's, Fireland's local school district is losing their local revenue and we're losing our local revenue, doesn't make sense to merge two failing concerns. So I, I don't know how to get out of this except for additional revenue. And you can see expenditures increase far faster than revenues do. And I do think that advocacy is a huge, huge aspect of this.
I do, and I think, I think there should be a letter that asks our leaders of legislators, what would we do to survive? What is your plan to have public education valued in the state of Ohio?
Because there is legislation-
Because they don't have a plan to say what we're going to do.
No, there's legislation-
Or what they're going to do with those dollars.
There's legislation that expands EdChoice, expands vouchers, wants us to pay the starting teacher salary much higher than what it is. And all of that comes with a requirement for more revenue. So, and the attack, onslaught on all of our revenue streams, I, it just, I don't, I don't know what to do with it. And we've been working on the forecast for two months, so.
And I, and I say this, and I bring this up about the letter writing, but I think, you know, we have a captivating audience on Saturday morning. We should, but if there could just be something there that was handed out or being handed out, I don't think it should be discussed. But I mean, you're going to have 15,000 people, possibly, that have an interest in public education. There's a great opportunity there to have a one sheet thing that gives them who they need to do and hey, on the reverse side is a sample of what they might need to do. Don't be the same thing, even if you just lay it or have it laying there or as part of the program or something, I think that that would be appropriate and helpful to get the message out.
I think that's a great idea.
But that's just my opinion. I'm not the marketing expert, but I know that it's going to have a huge impact on us. But we can't take away from the celebration, but if there's just something there that subtly says, hey, this has happened, and we would appreciate you kind of, your legislative on our behalf, from the state and the federal government. Just an idea, I thought I would share with everyone.
I think we could probably modify the letter that they already sent. And because our legislature, Senator and our legislators already included in there with what their email addresses are and all of that, so.
That's true, you can have all of that. That's why I think that that might be helpful, and we might see a surge from the Amherst district going to this.
Representative, President Dotson, first of all?
I received, in March, when I sent emails to both Representative Miller and Senator Manning, I received a response that we've received your email. But never have I had any face-to-face discussions with them. I think Senator Manning was here last year and, or the year before, and I didn't get to talk to him.
We see them each month that are superintendent, so we need to count them, there. Both Mannings, Joe Miller, they come to our superintendent. So we, we share our frustration, we share those things. They try to share, you know, what they know what's happening. But again, so many things are happening above their level behind closed doors, or, you know, there's not many people listening.
Are they kind of fighting on this side, or are they, are they kind of trying to protect the school, or are they?
I think that, I think that they are in favor of public education. They both come from very education-centric families. So I don't think that's the worry. I think, like Mike says, it's kind of the, the behind-the-door quid pro- quid pro quo kind of conversations that politicians have. Um, and we have a speaker who is very adverse to public education.
Go and do something.
Maybe, maybe.
It could be too late because that's not being elected until next year.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, it could be late.
It's November.
Next November, it's not this year. See, now the current governor for another year.
I just find it hard to believe. I know it's on the face value, but I just find it so hard to believe that giving public education and the very importance of it, this would happen with no plan.
There's no plan. The plan is it's going to, you earn a pay to go to school. And 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 that money's going to all the dollars.
Privatization.
You're going to have to pay somehow to get these vouchers to go to school. And if you don't have the means by which to do that, you will not be able to get an education.
But.
That's my.
Well, basically, that cannot happen because you can't.
Well, finally, things are going to happen and then they do.
I'm just saying, think about that.
They're thinking, oh, I'm going to get that tax break, I'm going to check that back.
But you, but you got to think about what is the, what is the general consensus of the population? That's all I'm saying. There, the people who can't afford that have no idea that this is happening. And that's kind of the way I'm looking at it is it's someone's desire to have the people that can't afford education to be a workforce that don't get educated. That's exactly.
People don't get this information to their emails that we do. We don't, they don't have these meetings. They shall look to vote without having looked at a whole bunch of information. They say, oh, no, no tax rate.
The progression that we've had, some people would like to see it regress back to what it was twenty-five, thirty, forty years ago.
Well, in in what.
That's just my own opinion on it, but I think.
Let's talk about House Bill nine twenty for a second because House Bill nine twenty is why we have effective millage versus voted millage. Back in the day, about forty years ago, less than, um, House Bill nine twenty was enacted and what it means is that no levy is ever going to collect more than what it was originally intended. So if you had a, if you had a levy that was maybe five point nine and it collected three million dollars back in nineteen eighty-five, it is never going to collect more than three million dollars. That's why as assessed valuation grows, effective millage decreases, so it only collects what it was originally intended. Oh, how many, that's why we have to go back to voters for new money. We're very proud of the fact that it's been thirteen years since Amherst School asked the community for any new money. We're very proud of that fact. We're no longer in a period where we can reduce staff. We're no longer in a period where we can ignore rising costs. Uh, we are failing in our revenue increases and that has to do with the state. The state is taking away a large portion. And I mean, in what realm do you guys know of that the state funding that's promised to us in the Constitution is decreasing over a period of of fifteen years when we know all the while costs are increasing? I I mean.
And not only that, as the cost increases, the state advances and provides more.
Yes.
When you look back, you know, to when we went to school or when you went to school more, we didn't provide near the surface. We, we, the services that we provided, we never had the opportunity to get. I mean, in your day, how many people had a free and reduced lunch? I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with that. There's nothing wrong with that. Everybody should get a free lunch at those schools. But if you didn't, there was no program to get a free and reduced lunch. We had, when I say we, the cafeteria staff or the parents or the other people that made sure that those kids had something to eat, there wasn't any of those kind of programs that exist today because they just didn't exist. And I was using that. But yet not only were we supposed to feed them now, but we need to make sure of their well-being and everything else is part of 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 education. When the Constitution was written, that was not the case. Education was you go and you learn the basic skills to be more knowledgeable about things, not the basic skills to survive in life.
One of the areas of, that you're speaking about are unfunded mandates. That's what we call it here. And we, no school administrator likes an unfunded mandate, right? Because it means costs are increasing, services are increasing, and we're not receiving any type of of, um, funding increases from the state. Um, a reason one, correct, if my terminology is wrong, but the science of reading. There's nothing wrong with the science of reading. This is not an opinion. The science of reading, legislation and, um, mandates from the Department of Education and workforce said that we had to adopt certain curriculum for the science of reading. And, um, with dyslexia, there's been added professional development. It's not cheap. You're taking teachers out of the classroom. You're getting a substitute for the classroom. So there's a, an intrinsic loss to the student when they don't have their, their staff member. That you have outright costs for bringing in professional development or sending teachers away for professional development. And then you know what the state gave us for, um, reimbursement for the high-quality instructional materials? We received about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars for high-quality instructional materials. But what did it cost? Half a million dollars. So, so we're receiving a little bit of of reimbursement for that, but only forty percent of it. So, um, these are the, the things that we don't know when we look into the future, but trying to put numbers on the paper and keep it positive in the fifth year of the forecast.
I thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for all of your hard work in the forecast. And I think the discussion is, is very good because it's, there's nothing any of us can do until we see how it all falls out. But it will fall to everyone in this room right now of some decisions that they have, that they have to make to survive or to provide public education. All right, we would move right on to the treasurer's recommendations.
Okay, so, um, you want to forward that, Mr. Muller? This evening, we have the regular meeting minutes of April twenty-first and special meetings of May seventh. We have April twenty-five financials, same things as usual. Um, you have the forecast budget reports for general fund and emergency levy this evening, but we are not required to transact the oh-six million emergency levy fund anymore. It's all part of the general fund. So you'll only be receiving one of the general fund in the future. Hop backwards, Mike. Um, we have appropriations changes. Those are detailed on the exhibit. Quite a few as we are cleaning up the, as we are. That's, we have a couple of Ben and Alie voices, one for the city of Amherst and one for vouchers for Ohio. The city of Amherst is a planned review and design, um, for which we were not aware. Um, so there was no, um, purchase order in place for that. Vouchers for Ohio, the board had approved the resolution to J. What exactly was that called, Mike?
Wackles.
Oh, Wackles, thank you. And the vouchers for Ohio. Um, and then we have the five-year forecasts, your fiscal twenty-nine, and donations.
So we entertain a motion for nine A through G. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there a discussion or comment for any of those items?
If you could repeat that, it was Mrs. Gillis and Mrs. Wackles.
That is correct.
Okay.
The motion was Gillis.
Yep.
Second was Wackles. Uh, no discussion. Please call the board.
Mrs. Gillis, I'm Mrs. Wackles.
I'm Mr. Zappo.
Or Mr. Engel.
Yes, aye. Motion passed. Moving on to item ten, Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah, I, I use my time for the retiring celebration. And also Mrs. Walker has a family concert. She had to go to it, but she left early. So we can go right to Mr. Engel's JBS.
Well, actually, I have a whole report for you this evening that I passed out. Yeah, I don't know if anyone's got that or not, but I knew it would be, I'd have some time since if nobody was going to have any reports, so I thought I would give you a seven or eight page document to go over with you instead of on PowerPoint. It's only five pages. Um, our board meeting last Thursday evening, we, um, received this presentation because one of the key things that, um, the JBS has focused on during this academic year was to have better communications throughout the district to build awareness of of the things that we do to build, um, great workforce coming out of the JBS. And, um, I'm not going to share all of these numbers with you, but certainly I'd like you all to take a look at it to see the number of followers that was gained in social media, uh, the number of reposts, the number of comments, all of those things and how it, you know, has gone up. You know, for example, when you look at LinkedIn gained seventeen hundred new followers in those eight, seven months from that perspective. And the number of things that got reposted and, um, when you look on down there from Facebook and through some of those other social medias. If you have followed the JBS at all, you know, career workforce development have been at the forefront this year at the JBS, which was one of our, was one of our goals to do that. You can see down there the number of interns, the amount of dollars, all of the things that have happened from that perspective. And you can see that what happened three or four years ago, the numbers of all was doubled in some of the areas. Building the key partnerships with the folks who need employers, I mean, employees in different programs from that perspective, we focused on that heavily. And we've gone from like sixty-two partners to like a hundred and thirty-eight partners this year. So I just think that it's a lot of good information in this handout that I provided to you, both from the student perspective and from adult ed perspective. So, um, if you have any questions about that document, you go, certainly feel free to ask me about it or you certainly feel free to contact the communications department or the superintendent of the JBS to, um, have some conversation about. But I thought it was good information out there. The pre-apprenticeship. Pre-apprenticeship is they do, they work with it a little before and then they get the apprenticeship. There's, like, they could start something when they were in like ninth and tenth grade from that perspective. Then the real thing would begin, or it could be that they're just a pre-apprenticeship after they're in eleventh grade and then they would get a full apprenticeship. Yes, or, yes. And we have two or three of those that, the day of the, the signing day, there was a hundred and thirty-two students that signed job. They were going to job. Two of them were in a pre-apprentice program to become a journeyman. Okay, so that, you know, they've already been working with a journeyman and they will then continue that through work, um, to get the qualifications they need to get that accreditation. Okay? The other thing that I'd like to share with you, that you had twelve Amherst students who, um, were contestants and participated and winners in certain things, um, from Amherst. Their names are here. I can pass this around. Uh, you can certainly see you had some, we, Amherst had one gold medal winner, um, Natalie Simonson with a gold medal on the focus on children. You had a couple of silver people, um, from that perspective, from both regional and state. So I, I did make copies of this page, but you are on the front page, I mean, the first page, and I highlighted the twelve students from Amherst. Now, there's probably been a few more than that because that was through the end of, um, April. So you don't have all the names on there. And I'm sure that you get some of that information.
Yeah, sometimes. Well, sometimes it goes straight to the high school.
I was going to say, it probably goes directly to the high school. The other, um, thing is there, the JBS started a strive program this year, which is a senior who's, needs some assistance, um, who might be not performing to the best of their ability or has some struggles in their homeland. Um, that program had minimal students because it was brand new this year, but the recipient of that, of winning that, uh, was from Amherst. After they won that program, they moved on to a regional program. That student again took the first prize there of two thousand dollars in scholarship. So she got three thousand dollars through that program, um, to continue her journey of education. And she's a, a bright student, um, but I think she may have some challenges that, uh, she's trying to overcome. And they're not, they're personal challenges, but not detrimental personal challenges. Okay, from that perspective. So I think that, I think all should know, okay? Any questions from the JBS? If you have driven by the JBS, you see there's a new sign on the corner of, uh, twenty fifty-eight that is available, that's out there, tells you about things that are happening at the JBS. Right in the corner up here quite a bit. So, uh, when you drive to Wellington, you'll see that somewhere, okay? That was one of the projects that we had been working on this year in Wellington. It's up. Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Not, we would move right on to the board updates. Teresa, I know you have a, or somebody, what do you do that card? There's a card being passed around. Why don't you just read it, Morgan? Since you have it, okay? Teresa, pass it right along.
I sure did. I sure did. Thank you. Dear members of the Amherst Board of Education, I hope this note reminds you, well, I wanted to thank you again for your generous scholarship support. Your kindness has made a meaningful impact on my college experience and I'm beyond grateful. Happy to tell you my freshman year is going very well. I'm involved in many organizations like the Ralph and Lucy Shea Sales Center, the Ohio Sports Method, oh, I can't read, sorry. The Ohio Sports Analytics Team and the Kappa Sigma Fraternity, where I was recently elected as the Professional Development Chair. Thank you again for your support in helping me start the foundation of my college career, sincerely, Mason Kidzler. Goodness, that's cool.
That's great, okay? Any other board updates that anyone would like to share? Everybody's good? All right, we would move on to personnel recommendations. Item twelve of the agenda.
Yes, there are nineteen items. They're all routine items as we are in the school year retiring and changing of contracts. Also, just a few, uh, staff members who are, you know, in reserve as classified substitutes that need over the summer to fill in for those on vacation. So I like to recommend personnel items A through S.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, the same two, same order. Is there any comments or discussion on items twelve, personnel recommendations? Hearing none, please call the board.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackles.
Aye.
Mr. Zappo.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
We would move on to item thirteen of the agenda, educational recommendations.
Yeah, there are fourteen items here. They're all routine. Uh, most of them are, um, contracts or agreements we have to prepare ourselves for next school year. And so I would recommend items, uh, thirteen A through thirteen M.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for educational recommendations. Is there discussion or comments on any of those? Hearing none, please call the board.
Mrs. Gillis.
I'm Mr. Zappo.
Mrs. Wackles.
I'm Mr. Engel.
Item fourteen on the agenda would be business recommendations.
Yes, just two items. One is for prom photo booth and the other one, uh, you know, we're approving the luncheon school prices for next school year. Um, Power Store AJ from the same, there's a slight increase in steal breakfast by ten cents and lunch by twenty cents. Um, and that would be because of portion size of the high school. And so just to make sure we're eating cost, uh, slight increase there. So I'd recommend business items fourteen A and fourteen B.
Second, we have a motion and a second for business recommendations. Is there any discussion or comments on those? Hearing none, please call the board.
Mrs. Gillis.
I'm.
Mrs. Wackles.
I'm.
Mr. Zappo.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Michael, that question on this, other food. Steven.
I suppose. Steven.
We, we talked about earlier with the cost of goods, how will we maintain that price? Are we, are we? Are we, are we underwriting that, or, I mean, how, how are we keeping the food prices the same as they increased through the past?
The, the food service fund, the O6 fund is actually building cash balance. They've been maintaining cash balance. COVID was very kind to them, and they've been maintaining it. So as each fiscal year, the USDA reimbursements grow, and we are expected to increase our local revenue, the prices that we charge someone as well. So currently, we're not depleting any cash balances in food service, Mr. Zappo.
Because the federal.
Yes, the reimbursement, it's going to be more of a year than the cost that she's able to, right up, yep. Again, the only, the only, the only spot that, that was not the case with Stevie, where we did run a little more.
No, I was just curious.
So that's why, and so then we, SDN, that's correct. She's, she's just only doing just enough to make sure we break even.
And to just follow up, we are one of the, we are probably the, I can't say that, but we are one of the few schools that run a profitable food service in northern county. I mean, one time we were the, I don't know whether some of them caught up to us or not, but we've always done that, and we've done that well, because everyone has always looked at us to say, how do you do this? Because typically, it costs that money. And we are also one of the few that still run independently ourselves, as opposed to outside. Any other questions, Mr. Zappo? We would go to item 15, the board recommendation. The board has a recommendation on the agenda this evening, so we'd entertain a motion. You already did that. So the motion is on the table for board recommendation. You've all read that, that we would authorize the superintendent to do research, including consultation or legal counsel, as others, as be necessary, the potential installation of South 300 Road in Amherst Township City, which is where the bus garage is going to go, and it goes on there. As you know, we had a special board meeting to talk about that, and it was decided that we think that we would like to move forward with that, so that's why the reason this recommendation is on here. Mark, do you have anything you would like to say since you were, or the, you and the building with rounds committee met with the city officials?
I, I mean, you know what we know, and like I said, Teresa and I met a lot of light, and there's a lot of pluses to keeping it in the city versus township. Not so much the township itself, but the amenities that come with the city.
It's the safety.
Okay, so that's there. The only, the only thing that I would like to say is I think that we need to make sure that it doesn't delay the project any more than it is, because the project is already four months behind. And so I would hope that the city administration acts swiftly on this, and I don't know the timeline for their action, because if we don't get things going here, there'll be winter again, and we won't get them.
Well, as long as we have what the city needs by tomorrow, they will, the mayor will take it to their special committee. There's their meeting on Tuesday because of the holiday, then they will.
Well, that's why this resolution is on here today.
I think, I think what Rex is specifically referring to though, is the situation with the electrical. If the city needs to decide forthwith if they're going to provide all of the electrical, the transformer, the poles, and all of that stuff, and do it in a manner, in a timely manner, that it doesn't delay us, because they have to say, no, they are not going to do something before first energy will move forward with designing the needs for the transportation center.
We, we will. We, yeah, we have to buy the transformer. And everything else the city is willing to do. We just need to give it the.
He indicated that he would push.
All I want to make sure is that we're not, the city's not going to debate this for two or three months, from that perspective.
Correct.
Because I think the construction crew is waiting for some answers. That's just my interpretation, you know? They're waiting for some answers, because they can't proceed until we know. All they want is a decision of, yes, we're going to go with A, B, C, D, E. It's all they want, so that we can proceed.
There will be no delay.
At least, at least what we would.
Correct. Okay, and I'm just making that note, that I want it to be out there, because sometimes they say they're just not going to be able to lay, and then there's a delay, because the committee doesn't agree. I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying the committee doesn't agree, so therefore it just gets tabled or lays idle, I think is all experienced.
He knows that we're, like, we're on a time limit here, we got to keep going, so I don't think there's going to be any, but I understand.
Yeah, I'm just, you know what I'm saying. So that's all I'm saying, okay? Is there any other discussion or comments on the board resolution? Nope. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Zappo.
Mrs. Gillis. Aye.
Mrs. Wackel.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Okay, item 16 would be move into executive session. Yes, we're going to move into the executive session this evening with no action taken for matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules of state statute.
Any motion?
Would you need a? We need a motion, we would just make on a session, it's a second, I. Mrs. Wackel, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackel.
Mr. Zappo.
Mr. Engel.